Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. Commissioners, Commissioner LaSalle has the request that we put the mics in front of our faces because he has issues with hearing. Yet if we don't.
Thank you.
The like? Yes. Here. My microphone on. Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner LaSalle is via teams.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds is absent, and Chair Morris?
Here.
Thank you. May we have approval of minutes for the December 15 meeting?
I move to approve.
That was Costa? And seconded by Gerard? Okay. Roll call vote, Commissioner Costa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Deb Reynolds is absent, and Chair Morris?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any communication? I didn't. Oh, go ahead. Chair Morris, please. Oh, sorry, it's not on. Just push that button. Yep.
Okay, that's better. Thank you, Chair Morris. I did want to inform the Commission of Council's actions last week at the Town Council meeting. They did approve staff negotiating a contract with urban planning partners out of Oakland for the housing element update. And so, we're working on that draft contract right now with hopes to actually have a kickoff meeting by end of February. We also, between staff and council, had a discussion regarding street vending, specifically in the downtown, right? This was a conversation we'd started pre-fire, and so we brought it back to them to see if there was any interest at this time for opening up vending in the downtown, which primarily is Skyway, Almond, Black Olive, between Pearson and Elliott. So, a pretty small geographical area. Right now, street vending can only be in the downtown for up to four days when tied to a community event like Johnny Applesey, Golden Nugget Days, but not for all-day, every-day vending. So, throughout that discussion, ultimately, direction to staff was to bring back revised ordinance for their consideration that for a two-year period would allow street vending in the downtown if that street vendor was tied to a commissary that was located in the downtown or had a brick-and-mortar restaurant that was in the downtown. But other than that, and only for that two-year period, at this time, they're not interested in, you know, in allowing it, vending in the downtown the same way that we do in the other commercial zones. So, we'll bring that back. And then, the other conversation was just about what staff's intention was, to start with the enforcement of abandoned business signs. I'm sure the commissioners have noticed these along the thoroughfares in town. So, this was going over with council. Here's the different types of signs that are out there. Signs where the sign structure's in good shape still, it's just the sign face that's been damaged, and what staff's recommendation is for enforcement proceedings on those. Other signs where the frame itself has been damaged, and how we'd like to see those signs just taken down, and just making sure we had council's concurrence on how we were going to be enforcing these, which we did. So, it was a good conversation. Also, part of that agenda was our mid-year budget adjustments, so those got approved. So, for community development, it'll allow us to do some additional purchases we need to do, some more work at the brick to finish moving the rest of our staff over there. Though we'll have a little bit more activity going on for the next couple of months. And then, also through fire, they introduced an ordinance, and this was originally brought to our attention by a council member, to change burn permits from a calendar year to a fiscal year. So, it ran more with a burn season than the way we were doing it right now. So, it was introduced. They'll be brought back next month for voting, effective 30 days after. So, those were the big highlights from last week.
Do we have any public communication? I did not receive any communication regarding this item. Okay, thank you. And we're ready to go to public hearing, 5A, item for Ponte Rosa Gardens' use permit modification. Is the applicant here? Or you want to present for us, Chris? Thank you.
Any commissioners?
Any.
So, the project applicant is seeking approval for, from the Town of Paradise, to rebuild a previously existing motel. This requires the modification of an existing permit. It's located at 7010 Skyway. It's zoned at community commercial, and it's just under three acres. Reason why this needs modification is because the use is changing just slightly. The area was previously surrounded by other commercial and residential uses. I think some of those homes still exist, and some of those areas are commercial buildings still exist. A lot of them are destroyed, though. It's identified as Building 5 on the site. There's a number of buildings on the site. You guys probably familiar with Ponte Rosa Gardens Motel. And the previous structure included three rooms for lodging, and then it had an area that was kind of a storage slash utility room. It was kind of divided, but in between the lodging and what was on the very end was a dwelling unit. I'm not sure how that was used in the past. I'm sure it was probably some kind of manager-type position, but after a while, they had vacated that dwelling unit, and they had put in a, on the north end. And this was the original unit. You can see the three lodging units, and then the center, the utility and storage, with the dwelling unit on the end with kitchen and bathroom. It looks very similar to that in the new design. They did do away with the storage and utility room and kind of expanded the dwelling unit, keeping the kitchen and restroom about where it was. But they want to use that instead of a dwelling unit as a, what they're calling a meeting room, or what you'd probably find in our code as a banquet hall. And so, very similar to the original layout, and it is categorically exempt from sequel pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1, as it is a negligible expansion of a former use. And so, given the light change and similar design, staff does recommend an approval with that. If you guys have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Parking? Is it existing parking for those units, and is that adequate for the number of people that will be occupying the meeting room?
Yes, I believe so. I mean, they still need to submit their building plans. So, nothing is necessarily approved for building until we get to that step. You know, I guess I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head whether it's going to meet the standards or not. I haven't evaluated that. But it's a pretty large area, and there is quite a bit of parking for that.
Okay. And then, the other question that I had was the actual size of the banquet room. There was, in the narrative, it said something about 1,600 square feet?
Yeah.
But when I looked at the map and added things up, I couldn't get there. So, I was wondering what the actual size is. If you could tell me that.
Yeah, according to the application materials that they submitted, 1,600 square foot was what was reported, so taking your word for it.
And the other thing is, the application states occupancy of 80, but the map there says 49?
Yes. So, when they submitted their application, they were trying to, they were going for a B occupancy, which would have capped them at 49. This was recognized and called out as their seating is not fixed, so that would allow them to move the seating around, and so, we had to let them know that you can't choose that occupancy. We have to choose something that reflects what is, the area is capable of. And so, and that's what changed it to an A2 occupancy, which allows, I think it was up to 20 or something, but 80 is their capacity.
Okay. So, 80 is the, the map was not, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Commissioner LaSalle, I have a question.
Yes?
I know they haven't submitted the building plan, but I'm always concerned about the look of the facade on the outside of the structure. Is it going to be compatible with all the other buildings surrounding that? Are they changing it? Any sense on that whatsoever?
Yeah, it is my understanding that they are going to match the existing structures, so we can expect it to fit in as you would expect.
Okay, well, that'd be an insistence of mine, that it does fit in with all the other structures. I don't want to see something that's pink with flamingos out front or something like that. Just joking, of course, but you know, we don't want garish. We want it to look quality. We want it to look like the other structures.
Sure.
Okay. Only question I had.
Commissioners, are they currently operating?
They are.
Oh, great.
I think this was the only structure that burned on site.
Thank you, Chris.
And then, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would you like to present to us?
Well, I really have nothing else to add other than what Chris put forward, but I'm willing to take any questions that you may have of me. As a contractor of record, I've worked directly with the owner as far as design is concerned, and use, as well as costing, and location, and all of the secondary and tertiary items that go along with the building, whether it be septic or what have you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Nope. Could I please get your name?
Just one quick question. Was the septic sized for the 82 people, or was it sized for the smaller one? I'm just curious how that got reflected back into the septic needs.
Septic needs were determined originally because that room was labeled as another unit. So, due to the change of use or the change of occupancy, that septic system is currently being designed by North Star to accommodate the new usages.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir. I'm sorry, my name?
Your name, please.
Matt Davis.
Matt Davis. Thank you, Matt. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
All right.
I'm going to close. Oh, do we have any public comment? I did not receive any comments. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any discussion, commissioners? Begin the microphone, please.
I was just concurred with your parking situation, but that's to be seen.
Okay, then if we have nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adopt the required findings for approval as provided, and approve the modification of use permit, yell 21, DAS 00012, subject to the conditions stated in the agenda item.
Yes, Commissioner LaSalle, I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by LaSalle, seconded by Costa. Roll call vote, Commissioner Costa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds is absent, and Chair Morris?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
And just a reminder, this motion, there's a seven-day appeal period on it. The appeal body would be the Town Council. Once that appeal period is over, then permits can be issued for this project.
Thank you. And then, we will move on to item, public hearing, item 5B, Simmons General Plan Amendment, Rezone and Conditional Use Permit Application. Thank you, Chair Morris. Let me share the screen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, right when you think that you've seen every scenario you can for zoning, this is a new one that's popped up. So, this item, it's a general plan designation and zoning designation, and also a conditional use permit application, and this is all town-initiated. So, this is in regards to Parcel 66434 on Upper Skyway. It sits next to Parcel 6, and both of those properties have always been bought and sold together. They act kind of as one property, and they both go by 9323 Skyway. So, on the upper left of your screen, this is our current zoning map, showing an erroneous jurisdictional line that essentially carves out this piece that we're talking about, Parcel 4, when in reality, that whole block of four parcels should be shown in town limits. So, this finally came to our attention right after the campfire, where the owners were attempting to get rebuild permits. They were able to apply for their house rebuilt on Parcel 6, because it clearly showed in town. When they came for the garage on Parcel 4, our staff, understandably so, sent them to the county. This is unincorporated area. And there became this back and forth between the county, the applicant, us, about not ours, not ours. Finally, had to bring in LAFCO, and that's the Butte County Local Agency Formation Commission, and that's who designates jurisdictional boundaries. So, they were able to provide us with our original incorporation documentation, showing that indeed, Parcel 4 was in town limits, our maps are erroneous, and when I went back and looked, you can, we have some old Mylars even from the 80s that appear to notch that parcel out as well. So, this is not a new mistake, but as such, we do need to assign zoning to it. And so, what we're looking to do through these maps, or through these actions, through the commission, through the council, is correct our jurisdictional boundary to show all four of those as ours, and then also, apply the general plan designation of town commercial, because that would be in concurrence with the rest of the properties that are on that north side of Skyway, all the way down to Bader Marine. And then, with that base layer of town commercial, we're going to also ask for community commercial zoning layer on top of it. Once we get those applied and adopted by council, then we can start processing these rebuild applications for the owners. Included in the packet as well is a use permit. If you recall, we went back and did a modification to the non-conforming use ordinance that allowed residents two years from date of debris cleanup to rebuild a non-conforming use, and that's what are on these properties, residential uses on commercial land. They've lasted a whole year through no fault to their own, because we didn't think this was our property. So, this would allow them two years from the date that council adopts the zoning ordinance, which is really in line with what the rest of their neighbors and the residents in town had. So, staff does recommend council adoption of the resolution, which would recommend Town Council adoption of that town commercial, general plan designation, and the community commercial zoning. And then, staff also asked for commission to approve the conditional use permit that's in your packet, to allow them that two-year period from date zoning is assigned. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Boy, they must have thought they fell down the rabbit hole.
Oh, my goodness. Any county agency that we could have talked to, we did, and even the tax bills weren't clear. It was a town tax rate area, but they weren't being taxed Paradise taxes. So, that wasn't even clear cut.
Must be.
Right.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Hartman?
Yeah, this is Commissioner LaSalle, just a quick one to make sure that they will be able to put a garage on something that's designated community commercial. They're not going to run into something down the road that says, oh, no, no, you can't put that there. Are they okay once we approve it?
Yes, if you, if the commission adopts this conditional use permit, it'll give them that two-year period to apply for that rebuild.
Okay, good, good. Those poor folks.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks for helping them.
Oh, my goodness, I was just as adamant as staff. Look at the maps. That's not ours. Right?
Any other questions? Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Do we have a presenter? Oh, we did it. We did it for them. That's right.
No, I let the owners know that since town initiated these actions?
They didn't need to be here.
They didn't need to be here.
Do we have any communication? And I will close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do we feel any need for discussion?
No, it's a no-brainer.
Get them, get them going.
I will entertain a motion, then, to adopt Planning Commission recommending Town Council adoption of Paradise General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and rezoning of certain real property within the Town of Paradise, and to approve the proposed Simmons conditional use permit.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Gerard. Who had the second?
I think Lynn did.
Oh.
Aye. We have a third.
Motion by Gerard, seconded by Costa.
That's fine.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Costa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds is absent, and Chair Norris?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we will move on to number six, Other Business, 6A, Acceptance and Referral of the Planning Commission Annual Report for Calendar Year 2020 to the Town Council Regarding the Present Implementation Status of the 1994 Paradise General Plan.
Thank you, Chair Morris. So, every year, staff brings this for acceptance and referral to the council, asking the same of the council, accept and refer, and then we submit these reports to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. For the general plan implementation status report, this is staff presenting to the state what actions the town has taken in the last calendar year to help further any programs or policies that are adopted as part of that general plan. Ours is 26 years old, so every year, there's fewer and fewer items for us to report on, but some of these, any of these capital improvement projects, right, which are projects the town takes on, those are updates that the state's very, you know, interested in. Any action we have towards this regional sewer, that helps reduce constraints to housing. We report all of that stuff to the state also. So, some highlights from last year, the council approved the plans and specs for the Almond Street and Gap closure projects in the downtown, and that will provide walkable pathways, lighting, landscaping, and road repairs. Also, our Public Works Department secured a $1.8 million grant to do an updated Paradise Transportation Master Plan, and this is big, because we'll need this, we'll need that updated information when we go out to do the general plan update. So, this is really helpful to get that rolling, plus they're working on another master drainage update, and all these documents will help our consultants when we get into our general plan update. The town also entered into escrow for a more centralized location for Fire Station 82, right? They're right there on the curve of Pearson and South Libby, so moving them elsewhere on Pearson, so we're still just in escrow. Yes.
Yeah, I made, I made a note as to where that is. Or can you tell me that?
Right now, we're just talking in broad terms right now.
Okay.
And then, also, in this last year, approximately 29 miles of underground electrical utilities have been installed by PG&E, and that's great news, right? That was a five-year project for them to get us all underground, so.
My first, my first reaction was just 29. It seemed like they'd been working and working and working.
Absolutely. So, staff does ask commission to accept and refer this annual general plan implementation status report to the Town Council. And if you have any questions about any specific programs or policies, may I have an answer?
I do, but you answered like three out of the five.
Excellent.
Thank you. On CP 7, about the new traffic signal, where it mentions the grant, the 2015 grant for the Black Olive Skyway section?
Yes.
That's been complete, hasn't it?
It is. So, not all.
It wasn't?
No, you're right, it's not updated. Some of these things, you'll see, they just, they get put in, and there's left, so that if the state is going through the other policies, they know that we've at least taken some kind of actions in the last 26 years? But you're right, there's, I don't have anything for 2020.
Oh, I thought that's when they finished that project. No?
It's possible that physically finished, we just didn't report versus the actual groundbreaking and getting the funding. But you're right, we certainly could.
It'll show up next year, I assume.
It can.
The other question I had was, there's a thing about residential growth, and I was just curious if anybody's tracking the population, like where we're at right now?
So, we are hoping to see the census numbers, right? So, census was in April of last year, and they haven't released the numbers yet, but they should be forthcoming in the next few months.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any way we're tracking that outside of census?
Yes.
I mean, I moved there right after.
No, you're right. I don't know the specific terminology for the funding source, or what exactly this is called, but through our business and housing, they have funding where they are, they've hired a private consultant that will be boots on the ground, knocking on doors to get additional data of who we've got out there. The disappointing part about the census is that the information we're going to get is very, very high level. Our population has been reduced so much that we no longer qualify for the more detailed breakdown of who is in town, so this other program through business and housing will help us understand those other, you know, needs better.
I do have one other question on SP 1819, the HHW facilities.
Oh, yes.
What are the future plans?
For the HHW?
Yes.
So, right now, we have exhausted all of our grant funding to keep it open for as long as we did post-fire, and so, we, at this point, are reliant on the county's HHW facility. Will still leave it in the solid waste franchise, and really, it's going to be based on population to be able to financially support the reopening of that again. It is our goal, it's just that we have to build more rooftops to support it.
And the vegetative waste, same situation?
Same situation with that. So, in case the commissioners didn't know, the town's green waste yard is actually, it's owned by the town, and part of the franchise, the solid waste franchise agreement, is that we can assign the operation of the yard to the franchisee, and that's what we've historically done. But part of the fees for that yard are subsidized by the accounts, and there's not enough accounts to keep it open. So, right now, it would cost about $40,000 a month, and then there are storm drain improvements that we know need to be done to the facility first before we reopen it at a price tag of approximately $750,000. Again, we want to get there.
That's all the questions I had. Anybody else?
Mine recovered.
Any questions, Commissioner LaSalle?
No, but just a compliment for you, to you, Susan, for keeping up on all this stuff. There's a whole lot there that you have to have in the back of your mind to be able to answer our questions, and I truly appreciate having you explain this to us.
Thank you, sir.
Here, here. So, I will, if discussion is over, I will entertain a motion to accept and forward the proposed annual implementation status report to the Town Council as written. So, moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Costa, seconded by Gerard. Roll call vote, Commissioner Costa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds is absent, and Chair Morris?
Aye.
Thank you. And we will move on to 6B, Acceptance and Referral of the Planning Commission Annual Report for Calendar Year 2020 to the Town Council Regarding the Present Implementation Status of the 1994- of the 1994 Paradise General Plan Housing Element.
Thank you, Chair Morris. So the housing element is just one of the seven chapters of the general plan, but it is the one chapter that's required to be updated every couple of years per state law. So while the rest of the document, you know, is in the twenty-six-year age, our housing element's on an eight-year renewal schedule. So we're starting to get towards the end of this housing element right now. And really, this report's more statistical. It's more how many housing units did we produce in the last calendar year, at what income levels? And we know where Butte County, there is a published list of what the median incomes are for the county based on number of people in the household. So that's how we can figure out how these houses slot in. So we report that back to the state. Every jurisdiction's assigned what are called RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So the state comes up with a large number of how many housing units the state needs to produce, you know, for that planning period of eight years. Then it's broken down into each county. So then the county is given an allocation. And for us, it's given to BCG, the Butte County Association of Governments. They work with a consultant then to divvy that up even further to each jurisdiction and the unincorporated. And so all of these housing numbers we have are from the 2014 RENA numbers that run through 2022. And so thankfully, the fire rebuilds do count in those numbers. So for 2020, based on how they want us to track these housing units, we had 507 houses, the majority of which understandably are above moderate income levels. But that leaves us with just 121 more housing units that are assigned to us. This is the closest we have ever been to meeting RENA numbers. Most jurisdictions, it's a goal. Nobody meets them. I think we're going to meet it this time. I'm very excited. So we have 121 more housing units. Ideally, those would be very low-income housing, but no matter how we get those in there, we will have met our numbers by the time that this cycle is over. Highlights from last year include council giving direction to staff to start the EIR process for the regional sewer. That is one of our biggest constraints to higher-density housing on the ridge, especially in the downtown, where you would expect to see maybe commercial residential two-layer kind of developments. That's a big deal for us. It's an eighteen-month process. And we have a consultant onboard who's already started on that work. So that happened last year. Also, planning staff was able to secure a state grant that will pay for the upcoming housing element update. So as I mentioned, the council gave us the okay to enter into negotiation. So during calendar year 2021, we're going to be working on that update all the way into spring of 2022. We need to get that final version to the state by May of 2022 for adoption. So commission will see and hear a lot more about the housing element this calendar year. And then part of that grant funding we got also will allow us to put out a request for proposals for drafters, architects, to draw ADU plans. And the goal is to get some of these smaller units, maybe somewhere in the 500 to 700 square foot range. So we'll actually be able to pay the professionals to draw them. Then business and housing still has leftover grant money from a different grant that they'll pay to master them through the building department. Then we're going to partner with Rebuild Paradise so they can host them in their master plan library and make them available to the public for use. So very excited for that. And then I'll also pay to have like an ADU booklet so people understand what the process is to get ADUs, because we definitely want to support and promote. So those are our big-ticket items for last year. But again, if there's anything special in there you'd like to ask questions about, I'm happy to answer. And then same thing, just asking commission to accept and refer the annual housing element report to council.
Any questions, commissioners?
I don't work you through. Crazy.
Then I would entertain a motion to accept and refer to the planning, the referral of the Planning Commission Annual Report for Calendar Year 2020 to the Town Council Regarding the Present Implementation Status of the 1994 Paradise General Plan Housing Element.
Thank you.
I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by LaSalle, seconded by Gerard. Roll call vote, Commissioner Costa?
Aye.
Commissioner Gerard?
Aye.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds is absent, and Chair Morris?
Aye.
Thank you.
And so, do we have any committee activities? I don't think we have any committee activities. We showed up. I showed up.
Do we have any committees?
This is a good 2021 so far. And do you have any?
I do have an upcoming project, just to put, you know, back in your mind. It won't be ready for March. But it is the resubmital of an expired subdivision map. So this is on Newland, which, if you guys know where Station Eighty-two is, that one we're talking about in the corner of Pearson and South Libby. It's that section of Newland that kind of backs up to it on the south side. That's where this land is. And this was an old subdivision, gosh, probably about ten-plus years ago. Expired before they got it recorded. So somebody else has purchased the property. They've made a couple tweaks to it. They submitted it as a new subdivision. But because it wasn't identical to the previous layout, they had to go back and do some additional perken soils work for septic. So they just got that approved. So now they've resubmitted. So we can finish doing the review. But ultimately, that will come to commission for review. And so subdivisions are when you have a piece of property that you're splitting into five or more pieces parcels. If it's four or less, that's called a parcel map. Parcel maps are done entirely by the commission, right? They only go to council on appeal. Subdivisions will come to commission first, but ultimately, they do go to the town council. And that's usually because of dedications that are part of those maps. Only the council can accept those. We always get those up front in subdivisions, whereas parcel maps, you defer all that stuff later until build-out. So maybe April, at the earliest, we could. It is nice that we've already done all these reviews on it. So just kind of looking at how close, you know, how much stuff we can use from the old review. But standards change. So we'll make sure we bring you a complete packet to today's standards for development for your review. But that's the only big one I've got right at the moment.
Do you have any new businesses to report to us?
I like that part.
I know.
Right. Yes, but I can't say it yet.
Okay.
The applicants are going to do their own press release.
Okay.
But there is one coming. We also just finished the septic review for the new donut shop in the DMV Shopping Center. So they're going to move forward with doing those. We know because we saw a business license application, there was another donut shop right in the Holiday Market going in there too.
Lots of donuts.
Sierra the donut. Goodness, Dana, can you think? I know. I'm sure there is. I just...
I know EJ's.
Yep. They did, yes. We are working towards getting them licensed.
Oh, they're not licensed.
For food vending, right? We need to get that food truck licensed. But that setup works, because that's where Sliced was, pre-fire. So they'd already worked to make that building like their dining room. It's just getting the vending license, yeah. But any new places to eat around here are always welcome. Exactly. Oh, AMPM. So their permits are either ready to issue or just have been issued. So they're going to rebuild their kiosk, right, and be able to hopefully do gas soon also. And we have plans in for the, I don't know if it's more for less or max for less, the other gas station across from Walgreens, Billion Skyway. So their plans are in for plan check right now. Yeah, gas is helpful also.
Very good.
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioners, do you have anything else?
No.